I'm going to call the Springfield City Council Work Session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillors Pitts.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Rodley.
Here.
Stare.
Here.
Woodrow.
Here.
And Pisionary.
I'm here.
All right, we have one item tonight, which is the American Rescue Plan Action 2021 Guidance. And it looks like it's Nathan that's presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are looking for guidance on potential uses for ARPA funds. Just a quick high level summary of the information in your packet. We were allocated fourteen million dollars in ARPA funds. We received the first seven million or just shy of seven million in May of 2021. And we expect to receive the second apportionment on a similar timeframe here in the spring. At the time that we received those funds, the guidance for using those funds wasn't fully formed. And so we put off this conversation until your return from the summer recess. In the packet, you'll see that I've described six high level categories in terms of how we can use and qualify these funds. The one that staff is focused on primarily is the revenue replacement. And not that you couldn't spend it in any of those other categories. But from an administrative perspective, it's probably the easiest and neatest way to qualify the funds. As of December thirty first of 2020, and based on the federal guidance for calculating the revenue loss, the city had lost revenue of just over seven million. Being that these funds can be expended as late as December thirty first of 2024, we feel confident between January first of 2021 and December thirty first of 24 that we will be able to qualify the entire fourteen million as revenue replacement. And determining, and at the end of that CBM, we have a list of potential uses. But in putting those uses together, we really looked towards the guidance that was provided by the GFOA. That's the Government Finance Officers Association. And I just wanted to stress a couple of things in that guidance. One is just the temporary nature of these funds. These are one time funds and best practice is that you use them for one time expenditures and try to avoid adding new programs or growing existing programs that require ongoing funding. And I think the other element from that guidance is they talk about shoring up your government finances. You know, from the impacts, both short term and long term impacts of the COVID pandemic. And if there's one silver lining from COVID, it is these funds and this opportunity that it presents. I also included the five year forecast. We typically bring that to you in October, but given the nature of this meeting, that it felt like a good time to bring you an updated forecast. We made some significant cuts in our fiscal year twenty one and twenty two budget. Between the two, I think to a total of almost a million dollars. And that has had a positive impact on our five year forecast. But as you notice from that forecast, we still have that structural imbalance. And these funds really provide us an opportunity to buy us some time as we continue to work on long term solutions. And I think finally, you know, we provided a potential use of funds. So in addition to any of the uses that you bring forward this evening, we provided a list as well. You'll note that the total of these sort of wish list of projects is more than fourteen million. I think it's closer to twenty million. But these are projects that have kind of been on our work plan, but lack the funding. And so again, this might be the opportunity to revisit some of these and use some of these funds for these purposes. Tonight, what we're really looking for is if you're wanting to use these funds in fiscal year twenty two, we're going to be bringing you the first supplemental budget on October eighteenth in regular session. So we'll want to get appropriation into that supplemental budget if we want to start using those funds in the current fiscal year. And that's what we're looking for this evening. This really is the first conversation. We don't have to allocate all fourteen million this evening. In fact, the GFOA guidance mentions recommends to take your time and careful consideration. We'll have a lot of other opportunities through three more budget cycles that these funds could potentially touch. This evening, there will be a number of staff members available if you have any questions. I'm not going to go into detail on any of these items, but am available if you have any questions. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to you to start the conversation.
All right, Leonard?
Thanks, Mayor Van Gordon. Nate, thanks for the report. You said that right now, as of this year, we're seven million in the hole. Do we anticipate in the next two years that we're going to be operating in another seven million in deficit? Or is it going to be that need?
Well, it's a little more complicated than just being seven million in the hole because we have healthy reserves currently that helped us weather the impacts. The other thing is the guidance provides every agency across the nation who's receiving these funds, revenues behave differently. Some are significantly impacted, others less so. So they had to come up with sort of a uniform way to calculate that revenue loss. And they provide for a four point one percent inflator. That could actually be greater than the actual inflation that we experienced in our revenues. So in some ways, that seven million is the lost revenue based on their calculation. It's not necessarily the loss we've experienced. When we had calculated the loss that we had actually experienced, it was more in the four to five million dollar range. And again, we made some significant cuts in anticipation of that as well as had healthy reserves. So we're not necessarily in the hole. But to answer your question, I think there's no question over the coming three years that we'll be able to, we'll see with that inflator easily qualify the remaining seven million.
Thanks. So I'd like to look into the possibility if we do have discretionary funds to spend in the next three years into restoring the funding of the programs that absorbed cuts in order to make the budget work this year. Can you give us some examples of the programs that were cut as a result of the lack of revenue that we had this year?
Yes, I mean, we made a number of cuts. And you know, when I say we made those cuts is I wouldn't say that all those cuts are equal. And I'll just give you an example, one of the cuts was in my department. We eliminated point seven FTE and then we did a restructure. You know, I think my staff would be disappointed in me saying this, but I wouldn't recommend adding that back. You know, there are needs in this organization that I think are greater than my need to have that back. While it's challenging for us to do more with less, again, I would invest it elsewhere. When I think about putting dollars to work in this organization, I think about putting them to work where they can generate potentially future benefits to this organization. And I think we gave some examples in our list of potential uses. We made a cut in our police department of two positions that actually weren't filled at the time, had been held vacant for some time and were being used to absorb overtime. We made cuts in our operations department. We made cuts in our IT department. There's a number of places where we've made them. And actually, we've actually made some cuts in past years unrelated to these previous two cycles or the COVID impact. One of those being in our HR department, some significant cuts in staffing. That's another place if I was to look to invest could be an area.
So you referred specifically to programs that could yield dividends down the road. Could you give some examples of those?
Well, one that just comes immediately to mind, and we've talked about in the past, is if we were to add some FTE in our HR department for a training position to if we had a training program citywide. And when we look at the issues we've had around our insurance, you know, a training program might be something that could help kind of reduce our risk exposure going forward. So that, you know, you have investments that can generate money and you have investments that could avoid potential outlays of money. And that would be an example of one that would avoid a potential outlay. Another one in here, and this is an item that's actually going to be coming to you next week, I believe in work session, is the replacement of our street legacy streetlights with LEDs. And we've done a cost benefit analysis on this. And the break even or payback on this project is roughly eleven years. And then from that point forward, it is a savings to our organization. So that's an example where I think, you know, in addressing our structural imbalance, that would be a great investment.
Okay, well, I don't want to bogart the mic here, but I would like to say that I would advocate some sort of a hybrid resolution of this where we could say, sign off on half of the amount going to revenue replacement this year and then revisiting this same time next year. That's just where I'm coming from right now. Okay.
Cory.
Thank you, and thank you, Councillor Stare, for kicking off the conversation. I don't know exactly what I want to do yet, but what I wanted to chat about a little bit is what I'm thinking in terms of what my mindset is and what my priorities are as I'm looking at this and thinking about this. And one of them is thinking, you know, in five or ten years, I want us to, or whoever sitting at the seats to look back and think, oh, that was money well spent. And that was money that was invested in a really solid way. So that's one of the, just the top things that I'm thinking at as I read through each of these. I'm like, okay, is this something that is going to, that is, it just feels good, you know, at this moment? Or is this something, like, for example, it sounds super boring, but we've been talking about, you know, the HVAC system for a really long time. And the longer we let things like that go, the bigger it creates, it's an issue, somebody down the line. So as I'm thinking about that, I'm thinking about that, like in ten years, I want us to feel like, oh, right, we invested that money really well. And the other consideration, like Councillor Stare said, is, and we've seen this happen before, is I also don't want to spend all the money before we actually get it because things change. And so it's like starting to try to think about that in a really reasonable way and prioritize those investments based on, as the money comes, what feels like it's going to make the most sense long term. Either save us money or like Nathan said, help us to make more money, help us to take care of things that are not going to cost us more money down the line. And the other thing that I'm totally open to and thinking about is like, how does this best benefit all of Springfield? So if that looks like some potential sort of partnership or sharing in some ways, I'm absolutely open to that because it's not just like, how do we, how do we benefit the buildings that belong to the city? But how is this most going to put Springfield continually, continuously on the road for more progress? So that's really, I don't know, I don't know my answers yet, but that's where my mind is at as we start to have this conversation. Thank you.
Joe, and then I'll come to Steve.
Actually, Steve had his hands up before, and I'll jump in after him.
Steve.
Anyway, we haven't talked about Willamah Lane, how much are they going to take out of that? And then so then we know what we're dealing with. And I had another question, I'll wait till later because I don't remember.
I think people are looking for our direction on the Willamah Lane letter. So that's something that we've got to talk about tonight and give some direction for Nancy about how to respond to it. So if we want to, so maybe save that one for last and we'll kind of come back to it. Joe.
Just going to say one thing real quick, based on what Steve just says, that Willamah Lane doesn't get to take anything. It's what we allow them to have. So just want to make sure we don't set the wrong tone there. All right, so Cory and Larry both make ton of sense. I completely concur. I think that with Nathan's making a ton of sense, we need, I want to, my hat's off to you all that put this list together. There's many things on this list that I went, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, things that, things that, these are, these are things. I've been on a council for a long time. And this is, these are some of the same cans we've been kicking down the road since I've been on and when I started. And I really think that it's time, this is an amazing opportunity because frankly, I don't see anything in our near future that's going to take care of these things. We've got to get them. And if we don't, I would consider it irresponsible if we don't because these are assets that I think that we are bound to make sure that they serve the community well and update when needed. So we maintain a safe atmosphere for our staff, maintain a safe atmosphere for the public coming in. So I greatly hugely support the, I mean, I'd love to go down the list if anybody wants to. Is this time where I could do that?
If you've got stuff that you like, yeah, now remember, there's twenty, probably twenty million dollars plus on this list. So it's got to get whittled a little bit and we got to get that direction on. So you talking about what's important to use.
Yeah, and that's fine because on some of these, because, for example, the cover projected general fund deficit spend is four to five million. You know, because I support that doesn't mean it has to be four to five million. So I'll just tell you what the things I support. And that's, and then we can look at that list and maybe Nathan, take a look at this list and say, okay, we got all these on the list, that represents this much money. So where could some of these be shaved down? And it could be proportionately saved, shaved down as opposed to targeting one thing to eliminate. If that makes any sense, okay? So we'll just actually, I'll skip the covered projector general fund at this point because it's the high dollar one. But I absolutely believe that we should make sure that we have the ability to handle the new developments and all the different things going on. So limited duration positions make an absolute sense. As long as they, they know right up front, this is a temporary position. And if a position potentially opens up that was preexisting, then they may be able to apply for that. But it's a temporary position. The Carter Building makes absolute sense. We've been kicking that thing around for, oh, my gosh, years and years and years. We need that, it looks terrible down there. Oh, my gosh, but I think that's, that would be a great investment and it's a return on our investment. We can make money back on that. We're already making a hundred K a year. I think we could even bump that up and make more money on that building. And to me, that's a great investment on rental property. The legacy street lighting replacement to me is a no brainer. It should be street wide and eleven year payback. That means that it's not an expense, considering an expense in eleven years. It's no longer money that's being used, it's money that's being saved. So to me, that that X's itself out and instead of it having to be spent, so to speak, in the first year and used up, it's going to come back to us in the, in the future. I mean, let me throw one thing in there on that. I did a project years ago, Wannaboo Power Administration. It was two thousand street lights replacement Eugene that I did. We went from mercury vapor to high pressure sodiums. And BPA paid for it because of the power light, guys. Maybe as a program like that's still available, let's check into it. Other than that, that's good. Well, and the other part I was going to talk about with those lighting is that with, with the LED lighting, it's white, white light. And the HVP, their HPV lights, I forget, HPS, whatever the heck, the high pressure sodiums, they put out that amber, a light wavelength and it, it really clouds and fakes you out on true colors. So the LED was, LED was, is much safer for the entire public, everybody. So moving down is the, the city hall, I'm sorry, the Justice Center roof replacement. We can't have a leaky roof. I think that's good money well spent. It irritates me that it died so quickly, so to speak, or prematurely. And frankly, I would like to look or have someone take a look to make sure that when it was specked out that we bought and if we hadn't expected life expectancy on it, if there's any legal way in which to come back. I don't know, it may not be, but hopefully somebody will take a look at it, not just assume that we can't recover something on that. City Hall roof and HVAC placement, replacement, like Cory was saying, totally smart. We need to do it, kick that can down the road. It, I'm done with that, don't like doing that. Website enhancement, I'd like to see more on that information. I think we need it, but I could see more. Council chambers and court security, that's absolutely something we need to do. I fully concur that, that that's actually a pretty conservative price tag, I think. But for what it's going to do, I think it's going to pay off in the end. Fire and Life Safety Radio Replacement, excuse me, that. I know I brought this up as far as it was, it came up, I recall it coming up during budget committee meetings and that they wanted buildings that would, that are have the ability to penetrate buildings, et cetera, for the signals, they can get signal in and out. I thought it was mentioned, I heard more information later that it wasn't budgeted. So therefore, I think it's, I think safety wise, it would be foolish not to buy that as a, well, just needed to do it for safety, staff safety. Museum elevator, again, that's one of those things where like HVAC, if it's old and torn out and spend it, instead of spending, you know, eight, ten percent to repair it, something like that, that old and for that price tag is not that unreasonable, should be replaced. Probably providing better safety for our, for the public. City Hall space remodel definitely needs to be updated. And for that price tag, it's not very expensive, I don't think, and something I would like to keep in there. Revenue share for parks, that's the next subject that I will hold off on my comments until after, towards the end of this meeting. City Hall external security camera system, I'm not, I'm surprised we don't have it already. So that means we're way behind on that. I think that's something that we should do. But probably get more information because there's going to be some ongoing costs there and how we're going to, how are we going to go maintain that type of security system for around city halls? Going to be important to know. North Gateway planning, how to address transportation issues. I think that's something that, at the sake of these other ones, I would not, I probably wouldn't endorse paying into that. I think we can partner up with ODOT, et cetera, for different options instead of us paying upfront. And then that's it for now. I have my own initiatives that I'd like to bring up. And maybe after I hear from everybody else, Sean, I mentioned a little bit about those. Should I mention that part now?
Yeah, why don't you get them all out so we can kind of start talking about them?
All right, just kind of go, all right. So this part is that there is a part about the parameters for these funds that what they can be used for and what I did notice, or what I didn't notice on this list was anything that was really geared towards economic development and how that can, economic development to me helps pay the city, give the city money in return, investment. And I would like to look at something to the effect of, okay, what is our greatest needs right now? That's housing, right? What, why isn't there more housing being built right now? Part of that is because of the development cost. I think that because we have a requirement for them, for folks to build and create bio swales, that's a significant expense that's quite often a yea or nay breaker for development. So bioswale courses where the water runoff from the impervious surface collects in this bioswale, it gets back into the aquifer and any overrun goes into this, the regular stormwater drain system. But that's a significant expense. I think that the city could look at paying for part or percentage of these bioswales at these developments at a set rate. So if a development saying, okay, I got to put in a twenty five thousand dollar bioswale, but that throws my numbers off to where I can't even build, I can't, I can't move forward with this development. Then that's something, or at least minimize that, at least that will allow for us to reimburse for bioswale. And of course, different sizes are going to have different costs. But so we would have to look at is what percentage of the bioswale should the city help reimbursement for? To me, that's economic development, you got job creation, you got climate improvement for the water, bringing the water into the aquifer. And you're moving the city forward with everything coming back in after it's built, you got income off that property. So there's my abbreviated sales pitch.
And, and folks, just recognize that, like, we're going to get more than one talk at this. So even though the staff sort of noting down other people's ideas, we're going to kind of refine this and have a couple of conversations about this. So we don't have to be like, yes, bioswales tonight or no bioswales tonight. Just kind of have a conversation about it. I think I had Mary Lee next.
Speaker, microphone.
Thank you. Yeah, I went back over the last ten years and was trying to think of all the things that we had thought of over the last ten years that we hadn't done because we went through the Great Recession and then we went through everything else. And so we just kept, you know, as Joe put it, we just kept kicking the can of some of these things on down. And when I looked at some of these things, I'm pretty much in agreement with Joe's list, it's pretty close to mine with very few differences. But to me, a priority for the, for where we focus at the moment is things that are maintenance that will take care of issues that won't become larger issues later if we don't do something like the roof on the Justice Center, like the HVAC, like the elevator in the museum. I mean, I was volunteering on the museum board twelve years ago and we didn't, the elevator was terrible. It's been terrible forever. So those are the kind of things, those are maintenance things that not only just maintenance and upkeep, but it maintains the value. And so I think it's really important to, to look at some of those and realize that they, if we have this, as Nate said, this is a little bit of a windfall that we weren't expecting, but we can get benefit from it and to be able to utilize some of these to take care of some of those issues and not have to say, well, but we need this first. I'd like to see some of those things taken care of. I think that's, I don't have much to say past what Joe said, just the, just the idea that, that I think it's important that we look at some of these things that we've been not able to do. I do like the idea of the, of the basic remodel though of expanding the library and moving city manager down to the old fire area. I think that's, I hadn't thought of that until I saw that in this list and I thought, boy, that makes a lot of sense. And the connection, it wouldn't be that difficult to make, to expand the library from the library meeting room onto city manager area. So it just, it just sounds like a good idea, a hundred thousand dollars sounds, you know, minimal in order to be able to do that. So I think that's worth looking at, something new that's worth looking at. But otherwise, no, I, I'm glad it was presented to us the way that it was so that we can then look at the issues in our city hall building, our Justice Center roof, you know, so we can look at those and we don't have to go, oh, but we can't spend it on that. I like the way it was presented to us so that we can look at those things. And something that I've always been a big advocate of that doesn't fall into this is setting up something that is going to be an ongoing cost. We can do that with other programs and we do that all year long with other programs and other funding. This, to me, this needs to be a situation where we look at these things that we haven't been able to take care of at a one time thing. We've been working on these streetlights forever. We've been, you know, little by little by little, we've been working, I remember having conversations with Gino about them because the yellow, the amber lighting is terrible for safety, it's terrible for being able to see. And when they came out and replaced the light in my neighborhood and they replaced it with an amber one, I had a fit. They replaced it with amber, put a wall of white wood in there, you can't see. So the sooner we can get that kind of thing really going and done would be, that's a safety issue. And I'm, and I'm all for that, that safety issue in that. So that's all I have to say, but I, I, that's where I'm coming from. That's where my mindset is at the moment.
All right, Damian, I think.
Counselor Riley was first, I'll let her go. Okay.
I was going, I was going to go a second round, but you have first round, so.
You're still on the first round here.
Okay, so I mean, as we all know, I'm simple. And so one thing that I think about is a lot of these are infrastructure based. And I do believe that those are needed. But when we think about how do we increase the cultural capital of our citizens? How do we provide access to understanding other cultures? How do we create a space where everybody will feel comfortable and be in a constant state of learning about one another so we can be better citizens to each other? And so I think of things like a sister city, we haven't had a sister city since nineteen sixty five, you know, but we have populations with origins in other countries. Why don't we celebrate those cultures or cultures that are similar to where we can all learn something? You know, how do we provide our K through twelve with access to culture education that they won't get in books, that they won't get in school, that they won't get at home? And I, you know, and I think a lot of this will feed into Willamah Lane, so I'm a huge proponent. And of course, I'm going to talk about creating pavements with barbecue grills because you feed people, they become happy and they want to stay here. And so I think that oftentimes we focus so much on creating new things and fixing old things, which, you know, is understandable, but how are you going to keep the citizens happy and keep them growing culture? But then also, how are you going to attract more people to want to make Springfield their home? Especially, you know, as we think about what diversity means, all of us, you can't bring in diversity if you have the same people rotating throughout these new houses. You know, how do, how do you create a space where people feel comfortable here? And so I would definitely ask, and there are multiple ways to handle this, but I would definitely ask that we consider how do we enhance and add elements of culture to our city?
All right, thanks, Damian. I'm going to make a couple of comments and then we'll go through, we'll go through round two. I like the list a lot. I think it's, I think it's pretty good and pretty spot on. I would be supportive as we refine this to put money in. I don't know how much a sister city costs or what it entails, but you know, I'm supportive of having that conversation and making sure that we sort of do some due diligence around it and see what, which direction. Sort of do some due diligence around it um and see what which direction that we go. Um, one of the things that. I really like what Counselor Riley said is if we imagine ten years from now, we want people to feel like this money is well spent. Right? And that's kind of the filter that I'm that that I'm looking forward to it like. So the revenue recovery and understanding and getting that money programmed. So that we understand how to fill in the the structural deficits critical to me. Um, understanding that, you know, having the project delivery, the additional folks come on almost immediately in the museum elevator is, you know. Kind of become critical to me. The website thing is something that needs to be fixed. Um, for, I don't know if it's two or three versions we've been through the website. But it's terrible and like we always sort of do it in, you know, and we always try to do it on the cheap. Instead of having sort of a modern, uh, a modern website that goes with them, you know, modern growing city. So I think that's, um, I think that's pretty important, too. Um, I've got some uh other. The the one, um, I like Joe's idea. I think that's valuable to kind of have a development conversation. Um, in the next version around this. Um, the Carter Building is really important to me. I love that that's on the list. Um, the other one I would, from a remodel perspective, I I want to hear a little bit more for is like, what's the actual gap from the? From the Chamber of Commerce. I know that that conversation is kind of out there about what that because because we technically own that building. Um, and wanting to understand, you know, do we have an opportunity to sort of leverage some of these funds, you know, even though it's a much smaller building? Um, with that goal as well. The other piece that I would like to see is I would love to put it, you know, a hundred grand or so in in plan. From from neighborhood trees, right? We like something easy that improves livability would be more or be more tree landscape. So understanding over the next five or ten years, how do we spend, you know, find different ways to replace? Storm broken trees, trees that need trains, but just generally spruce up neighborhoods would become. Yeah, is really important as well. And I do see the Willamalane superintendent. Get Damian his barbecue grills, Michael. Um, all right, Cory.
All right, round two. I'm for trees and barbecue grills, too. Um, one of the things that, and you touched on it a little bit, the mayor touched on a little bit, is I also. And this probably just creates more work for staff, but I think there's an opportunity for us to look at how to leverage this funding as part of bigger projects. So, um, and that. Has yet, I I mean, I think that'll be unfolding in terms of what the opportunities are. Cause I know that occasionally grants come up. Or there might be these opportunities for partnerships that could be really creative. And because we would have some capital to put forward, we may be able to leverage that into it. So that we are not covering the entire cost of some of these projects. So, um, that's another thing that I would just like to kind of keep on the table is us to think creatively in terms of how do we use this money? To possibly partner in creative ways and and grow it so that we can make it go further.
Merrily.
I love the idea of a sister city. That just makes me smile. I just, I think that's an awesome idea. Um, I think that, I think that can, I think, I don't know how to do that. I'm going to defer to Damian is that, you know, what the process of something like that is. But that incorporates an exchange of cultures. That incorporates all the different cultures and subcultures that we have in this community. Um, and in exchange with another sister city, at least that's my, that's my initial concept of it and I could be wrong or it could be all, you know, offline a little bit. But I just, I just love that idea. I just, I just think that's really a fun idea. I think that's something that the community could have fun with. Um, and and I just, yeah, I just, I just want to apply to sense in there. I just think that's an awesome idea.
Leonard.
Thank you. Um, I'm interested in the idea of a sister city to the counselor Pitts brought up by. Um, so how does, how does a sister city concept work? Would it be cultural exchange? Would it be cultural festivals? I mean, what, what generally happens with a program like that?
Uh, I mean, a lot of it is based off of uh what the cities want to do. Uh, last city we had was in Venezuela. Uh, since then, there have been other cities in Mexico and Korea that have reached out. Uh, to be honest, some probably don't want to partner with at this time. Uh, but, you know, we can have festivals, we can do exchange, you know, if it is. A country where some of our schools teach that language, I mean, we can really get K through twelve involved. And this can be really great for all. There is an actual organization, Sister Cities International, and so. Uh, Neil, send me some information. Thanks, Neil. And I've been working with, uh. The museum going through a bunch of old documents. I mean, just some fascinating stuff. Uh, and so we just gotta figure out how to make it work, but I mean, it seems like everybody's on board. It's fairly easy to do, it's not going to cost a lot of money. Uh, but inherently, this will be. Good for the culture and could be potentially revenue generating. I mean, I've had some ideas to where. We challenge every restaurant on Main Street to create a dish that's related to that specific country, the one we choose. I mean, this can be really fun, uh, and really like long term, we just got to keep it going. And so I I'll continue to work on it and and have more soon.
Yeah, of course. I I was also thinking that a program like that could yield immediate material benefits if we. Picked a sister city that had had wildfire problems for centuries. It's a fairly new problem for us. But I'm sure that there are countries in Western Africa and in Northern Africa. Um, in in the deserts that have had wildfire problems for a while. Well, actually, not in the deserts, but it it would obviously require forest land. But I I'm thinking that there have got to be ancient and longstanding programs of fire mitigation. That we haven't even thought of and that could be our sister city could probably help us with.
So, yeah, I think this is a good conversation to have. Um, I'm hoping that we can make, you know, I know some research has been done. Um, when we do council goal setting, maybe we can have some of that material to talk about a little bit more. I see some interest in this. Um, and maybe using using this as a funding source. Um, but, Joe.
Oh, thank you very much. Now, Steve, you've been quiet. I mean, as far as we've been doing round robin here and have you?
I like your list. You're, you already, you've already done the list for me. So I don't, I don't know about the bio swales, but everything else on your list, I liked you.
I'm just trying to get, I'm trying to get more housing. That's all I I want.
And sister city, God, I never even looked at that, you know, I'm too busy looking at Springfield to think about looking outside, so I could set sound limited up. But and we talk about wildfires, we're on Greece, we're on Spain, Russia's got the biggest wildfire of any place in the world right now. I've I've worked on that. That'd be interesting. And then that's a, that's an interesting concept, a wildfire. I like.
So, um, anyway, so, uh, Damian. Dang it, you came up with a great idea and it was like. I I think it's awesome, the sister city thing. I like, I like the uh, local neighborhood barbecue spots, maybe even covered and. Um, so I, I am all about, I love barbecues. I love bringing people into barbecue together because you can have some really amazing dishes. Um, I know that they got a couple outdoor barbecues that Willamalane does, back behind splash that are that are covered and are used. I think that, uh, I guess Michael's there could verify, but it's, I'm guessing that that those. Those areas are booked out. But it's something that maybe that that instead of just here in Thurston to. To get some of different parts of the city, maybe not so huge and fantastic and where they're more usable for smaller groups and. And and not necessarily have a a price tag attached to them, but. There's a lot of things they got to consider, you know, for the, for the undesired use, you know, that's uses that that aren't really good for that and and. Yada, yada, but I support that. I think that'd be great. So anything neighborhood that we can bring these people together, I'm down for. And the sister city, I think, is a great idea. Um, so this has been a great conversation as far as I'm concerned, so. Awesome, and I like the trees. We're good, we're good with the trees. I'm all right with that, so, all right, but don't forget about the swales.
Well, we're, we're going to take, we're going to switch this into the next phase of the conversation here in a second. So. Merrily, did you have another comment you wanted to make?
Just one quick comment. It came to recall as I was listening. Uh, my, I have a very, have a thirty year old, uh, thirty years long friend that teaches English in Japan. And her classrooms have been part of sister cities. And they trade letters and translate letters back and forth. And so it it doesn't even have to remain. Within something that is strictly the city, but it can expand beyond into schools and and other cultural parts of our community. So I just, I just wanted to throw that in because I I just, I think this is a super idea.
Okay, so here's what I think we should do, um, because there's, I think, two phases to this conversation. Um, I think, I hear everybody saying like comfortable that the staff can go ahead and program. Um, the revenue recovery portion, right? So because that's something they naturally need direction on. You know, sort of, sort of tonight to plan, plan from a budgetary perspective. Um, so I think in Nancy, maybe you can help us here with the actual programs themselves, right? Like, I think you're probably good on the temporary staff, you're good on the uh, on the, on the money piece. But I think there's places where you guys need to kind of refine the idea a little bit more. Um, and try to get to an actual number and then there's places that you're probably going to want to program into next, like next year's budget as far as the project goes. I think really the next thing we probably want to do is sort of separate, here's the first group of projects that we want to go. And then probably here's the stuff we want, need to research a little bit more.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think that's an excellent suggestion. You know, we, we really, and I want to thank our, um, Nathan. Um, and Neil Ladati, uh, Neil Oberinger and Mary Bridget Smith, um, for helping put this list together. Um, we were really trying to focus on what can give us the biggest bang for our buck in a one time use. And, you know, recognizing that we do have a lot of deferred maintenance in city facilities. Um, and as Counselor Riley aptly pointed out, it doesn't get cheaper to do it later. Um, so, you know, a couple, I think the the really the newer one was the concept of the city hall space remodel, which would. Allow the library to have more room. So we kind of put a placeholder amount there that could certainly get further refined. Um, and and we can certainly put um, some priorities on this based on, you know, we have some. Some of these projects, as as we know, we we've been working on for years. So for instance, the streets, the streetlight program would be. An easy one to plan and and launch pretty easily and rapidly. So, um, you know, we already know kind of what we need to do and and the mechanics behind it. So. I I think that's a good idea. We can put in priority order, what what are more like shovel ready, so to speak, versus what we need to do a little bit more work on.
Yeah, and my suggestion would be, because we we still haven't even do. I sort of dived into the Willamalane conversation is that we can find more work session time when and come back with that list of saying. Hey, here's the stuff that's probably going to go the next budget cycle that we want to head nod to program. Here's the stuff we're hearing, yes, and. We probably need to research a little bit more and in more broadly, um, I actually think this may be like. This may be a good list to sort of talk about again when we do sort of goal setting, because even if we don't find funding for all these projects immediately. This is all stuff that I'm seeing people say, yes, we need to be doing that. This is a really good project list to start working off. Go ahead, Merrily.
And they're state level grants, as Cory mentioned, but getting partnerships, they're state level grants. They were, where they're happy, they're looking for places to give to in Springfield. They've been, the last few years, they've been very interested in getting money into Springfield. So there's state level grants that are available for different things like that. Especially increasing anything that has to do with arts and culture. So it, they're definitely be worthy, looking into to see if we can partner some of this money and and really make it, you know, the best we can do.
Okay, um, our, so it, and go ahead, Joe. Oh, I thought your hand was left over from the last time.
No, I I went like this. No, I'm good. Um, so I I just want to rephrase that, like the the bio swell thing is what's in my head is, is. Um, get some information back and all those those multitude of of low impact development treatments is what I'm talking about. The development treatments that are required to have some, to construct some sort of incentivized. Uh, those be incentivized so that way it can kickstart some of these, these developments. That's. But I think the first one that hit my head was that is the bio swell, but I think there's others that we require that that if we have an incentive program that it would. Kickstart some development, for sure.
Okay, so, and sometime this week, maybe Nancy, if we can kind of get a summary of this one, because this conversation was great. And it was all over the place, but you know, just that, that e- that extra email, you know, look to say, hey, here's the plan, here's what we heard would be. Absolutely fantastic. Um, okay, so now the question is, what do you, what, what do folks want to do with the Willamalane conversation? We, if we got the letter, I came out probably four thirty-ish. Um, I know some people have read it, some people haven't. We probably, we we need to get them some sort of response back. Um, and I know we've spent like three times as much money as we actually have here, but and that will get refined over time, but. What, where are folks at at with Willamalane?
I've read the letter, I have no idea.
I, I haven't had a chance to um, see the letter. Could you give us the gist, Sean?
Um, that, so I'm not going to get this a hundred percent right, so a little bit of grace would be great. Um, the requi- when they calculate their revenue loss, they have about two point eight million dollars of lost revenue. They've made a request uh, for the city uh, to give them payments of one point seven million. Out of this same bucket of fourteen million dollar savings and let me see if I still have it. And that their request would uh, backfill shortages that they have in their parks, planning and facilities. Um, increase offerings of childcare, preschool and early childhood youth programs and increase hours at their fa- at their facilities. That is really high level, please, right? We we've got to do, um, you know, do the right, right level of service for. Willamalane as an organization and read the, read the entire letter, letter in its entirety because it's still two pages long. Go ahead, Leonard.
Thanks. So, um, who would, uh, who would the childcare program, for instance, be available to?
Uh, some of it's low income. My sense, my sense from, um. From my reading of the letter, when I read it, is there was this ton of stuff where I felt like we needed more information. But it it's not that, it's not that specific, it's just in general.
I I was going to say, just based on my own empirical experience, I mean, my anecdotal experience, God knows there's a need. I mean, we, we have a desperate need for childcare in the city right now. And at least in principle, like, I I'm like you, I think I need to know more about the nuts and bolts, but in principle, I'm certainly in favor of it.
Nancy.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I don't know if this is the time that the council wants to do this, but, um, Michael Worgo is available. If you want him to go into greater detail on any of the portion of their letter.
We're going to try our leverage of, um, of technology here. Yeah, I think it would be a good idea to bring Michael up to see, uh, Cory, go ahead.
Well, while we're, while he's climbing into the the Zoom. I, I would like to keep Willamalane in the mix, um, because as, just from reading the letter, which I did read before coming on. Um, it is service focused. I am a fan. I think I've told everybody that. I think Willamalane is great in a treasure and. Um, has not had access to the funding, so I would like to keep them in the mix. I agree, I'd like to to have, we probably need more detail. Because we need more detail on all of this. Um, and as I mentioned very first, I'm open to sharing for the betterment of Springfield. And I know that, you know, Willamalane is experienced by so many of our neighbors. So. That's all, I want to keep it, I want to keep them in the mix as we move forward.
Um, Merrily, and then we'll, we'll, we'll let Michael uh, talk a little bit.
Yeah, the only thing, the only thing I comment was coming on was again, the the need for details. Um, I I've said part of it, you know, with the increasing the offerings of preschool and early childhood and the, you know, the. Paid and free care options and that and and is part of it. And there's other parts, you know, that need more, that need more details. What what I'm looking at is I'm looking at. Um, in in thinking along the lines of what Cory mentioned. Um, being able to portray that, that complete image of look, look what we were able to do. In collaboration with Willamalane, in collaboration with the city, for the city with this, with this windfall that we got. And and be as as open and honest about it and, you know, we we're putting ourselves out there to do this for. The city, for the community and and I think Willamalane is part of that, depending on how it, however it works out, Willamalane should be part of it.
Um, Michael, um, could you maybe just take us through your general ask and um, s- some information and then we can open it up to some Q and A? If if we put you on the spot, I don't know that you were expecting to speak, so if you want, if, you know.
It's one thing, uh, I've never, unfortunately for most, that backed away from an opportunity to to speak. So I appreciate Counselor Woodrow's introduction there and the support that we always get in all, in all seriousness. I mean, this is a tremendous partnership between the six.
I mean, this is a tremendous partnership between the city of Springfield and Willamalene. We've enjoyed it for many, many years. Um, just a little bit of background, the first go-around, the coronavirus relief fund, uh, we, we had direct access to those funds. We immediately made application and were fortunate enough to recoup, um, a portion of what we had lost over the first, uh, six to twelve months, uh, based on the COVID, um, pandemic. This go-around special districts were not as fortunate as were eligible, but we did not have direct access to the funding. We were told by, um, the federal, uh, federal government representatives, as well as at the state level, that we would have to make a, uh, an ask to local governments, and that's what we've done. Um, shout out to the fine city staff that have worked with us, but there's never been like an exact amount. Um, so what we chose to do was, and again, um, I, I would honestly be really honored to get any of, of, of this funding because there's so many needs. But, um, our budget in relation to the city budget operationally is about 12%. Um, based on the GFOA, um, calculations that my CFO, uh, Betty Nielsen had provided. We, we did have a $3.6 million loss as a direct result of, that's our total loss. Um, 2.6 of that or 2.7 of that was revenue. So what we figured out was 12% in proportion to the city budget would be about $1.7 million. Um, what we would use that for, well, to me, the biggest thing, and I've heard it probably a half a dozen times tonight, is economic development. Um, you know, we are still dr- drastically short-staffed in our frontline positions. We can, we are having a, a horrific time trying to hire people in those positions. Uh, those in the for-profit, uh, fast food companies, those types of positions are able to offer incentives that we're not able to. So not only have we lost a percentage of our staff because of that, um, we also have not been able to recruit them back. So we have had to reduce our early childhood programs. We've had to reduce our before and after-school programs at the different school sites, where we've only got about 40% of those sites available. And to me, you know, that's twofold. Number one, the more people we can employ, the more m- money goes into the local economy. Um, and, and the happier that the local businesses are, the people can pay their taxes, people can get their permits, all those things. As well as it provides parents, guardians, the opportunity to go back to work and not worry about, um, daycare, preschool, because Willamalene would have them covered. It also would, um, you know, encompass all need. If someone has a need, we have scholarships available. If they don't have need, we pride ourselves in, in running high-quality programs at, at a, um, at a, at a, you know, a very, very fair price. So, um, I'm, uh, something else that we had talked about was just our increased hours of operation. We've had to shut our pools down. Um, and because of staffing, and I think if we were able to do more of that. So the majority of our ass is just lost wages. Um, you know, we did have a significant, um, payment in unemployment that we, uh, are required to pay, but, uh, that's a main thing. As well as there are some other items that I don't think, um, are as important or as big enough. But, you know, we have had some expenditures to try to keep the public safe through touchless, um, faucets, reopening up, uh, our, our, uh, permanent lavatories versus having porta-johns. I know it's not a sexy thing, but one thing that we've been, you know, almost required to do to keep everyone safe. But, um, I know that $1.7 million, uh, seems like, uh, a, a sizable ask, but it is only just a portion, almost half of what we've lost. And I'm very, very proud of the fact that we've been able to, to stay afloat, to keep people as employed as we can. But, um, this would be a significant help for us to provide, you know, I think, exceptional parks and recreation for the city of Springfield.
So, Michael, I've got a couple of questions and then, um, I'm gonna open it up for, for folks and then we can see where we go from there. Um, and I really appreciate you, you know, jumping in on the spot and, you know, helping some, helping give us sort of context to that. When I read the letter, when it said expanded hours, I read it as additional hours, right? Is that expanded is, or is it sort of trying to backfill back to the historical norm?
Yeah, it's just, and I hate saying new normal because it's just normal now. Um, it would be getting back to those historical hours of operation. But of course, we'd always love to be able to expand that based on the needs of, of the public.
But it wouldn't be, it's not sort of incremental hours to where you've historically run. It's more like trying to, it's more like trying to get back to normal.
We would love to get back to those hours of operation and from February 2020.
And my second question was, and, you know, I know the, the preschool partnership in the community is really, really important. Um, I, with, I know the school district's getting a, a lot of additional support for daycare, childcare, preschool. Is there a partnership that's going on with, between Willamalene and the school district to try to get some of those resources to you?
Yes, quite honestly, uh, Mayor, we would not have been able to run our summer programming at the level that we just did if it wasn't for that partnership with Springfield Public Schools. They were able to get some funding and I cannot thank superintendent Hamilton enough and his staff for working with us to provide opportunities, scholarships, just to give you an example, you know, our One Pass program where there's destination sites to keep kids busy and active all summer long. They provided a free One Pass for each and every public school student this summer. So there was a high level of collaboration that really, uh, had a positive impact on, uh, the quality of life, uh, during this past summer.
Okay, thank you. Um, does anybody else have questions for Michael? Merrily?
I don't have a question, but as Michael was talking, the first thing that came to my mind was when this, when, when we get opened up, we need to have a Team Springfield, uh, meeting, so everybody can be a cheerleader for everybody else. You know, it just, we've been through this for the last almost two years now. And, and we just, we needed, we need, we can get Damian's barbecues and we can have a big Team Springfield where everybody just cheers everybody else on, because it's been that kind of two years and nobody has given up. Everybody has hung in there and tried to do the best that they can do and listened to Michael and fill in the, and realizing that the school district has pulled into their part. Uh, we just, yeah, we just need to keep that ahead of us. So when we get to that point where we can do that, boy, we really need that.
Well, well, sign me up with a spatula. I'm, I'm in. And just talking about really quickly about Team Springfield, we continue to meet each and every week. Um, I can't thank, uh, uh, Nancy Newton enough, Neil Ladati. Uh, they meet with my staff each and every week to find out how we can collaborate on special things. And that's what makes Springs feel so, so important and so special.
All right, perfect. Um, any other questions? And Michael, like, we see it, like, I, I, I know that, you know, it's, you know, when we talk about how hard everybody's working, it's a lot easier for, you know, us at, at the city to see what the, what our staffs are doing, but we're seeing them in the school districts as well. So I think it's important that you, that you carry that message to folks too, is that we see, we, we see it. People are working their tail off.
Well, I certainly appreciate any consideration. And, and again, um, my, uh, submission was really just out of, you know, we, we do need the money, but it was completely respectful because we know that there is no guidelines. And I, uh, empathize with the situation. You've got more ass than you have money for, so I just appreciate being in the conversation.
I, I, I think the best thing, and, and I'm kind of looking for the right, the council, because we're gonna go into sort of phase one of this conversation and phase two, is maybe bring you back into phase two of that conversation and let, give you a chance to sort of develop this a little bit more and maybe take that, you know, 1.7 and kind of, because I think you had like three buckets in the letter, you know, that'll give people a chance to read the letter. And then maybe you can come back and talk to us about like, you know, how you're trying to, you wanna split this up a little bit and get, give us just a little bit more context, and then we can talk about it when we get into the next conversation.
Be more than happy to. Thank you.
All right, I appreciate it, Michael. Joe?
Don't go away, Michael. So one of the questions I would have, and it's, and it's not that I, I, not that I'm, uh, against what the request was or anything like that. What I, as a numbers counter type thing going on, is that your, uh, your decrease in those fees were, you know, basically you're saying that you lost 2.7 million in the, in lost revenue. And so that's creating a shortfall, I assume. But, um, I know that you, you laid off, uh, what, fifty or forty-six folks? And so if, uh, that means also that your operational costs dropped significantly. And I'm just wondering what the difference is in, you know, was that shortage? Uh, how am I getting to this? The forty-six people that weren't getting paid, do those, were those people getting paid? And you, uh, got that loss or were they, were you, were they already gone? And you didn't actually, you didn't actually suffer a, uh, an outlay, or did you have to dip into, um, reserve funds, so to speak, to cover their costs? So that's, that would be kind of the breakdown I would look for in, in regards to the ask?
Yep, no, we can absolutely provide that, but, uh, you know, in a nutshell, we're required each year during a regular budget, a non-pandemic, smoky air quality year.
Right.
To make between four and a half million and five million dollars to make our budget. And, uh, those revenues also go to pay for some of those revenue-producing programs that we have. If we don't have the programs, we don't have the staff. Um, however, we do have fixed costs that, you know, we're required. But a lot of times during, you know, we provided, um, COVID leave that was not budgeted for to take care of families as they went through. Um, and, um, you know, uh, Emergency Family Leave Act, we got on the work share programs. There were a lot of costs that, uh, still are, were required to pay for, including we chose to still pay for everyone's health benefits, even if we laid them off or furloughed them. So there are some of those fixed costs that continue to pile on, but I was very happy that we didn't have to dip into our reserves. It was very close, but it wasn't without reducing, um, programs, uh, offerings, as well as some of the positions as well.
Okay, thank you. I was, I was really curious about the reserves, if they were hit hard or not. All right, awesome. Thank you, Michael.
All right.
And just to add to that a little bit, even though I don't know all the details, as a Willamalene member, um, I know that we were not charged our membership for the first several months during the pandemic. And, um, I've said this to a few people, I swim really regularly at the Willamalene Swim Center. And I have been crabby, like everybody else, I have been crabby because just when things opened up, then the, couldn't find staffing, the hours reduced. And then just when I might get in a new groove, then they've like gotta close for me. So I have been crabby with other people and also understanding, as Merrily said, that we are all in this together. So I think that I, I have, I have experienced it and I also see it from our perspective too. So I just wanted to add a little anecdotal, but it has been shocking. And I, I would have continued, just so you know, I would have continued to pay even during the pandemic. But I know that your expenses continue, but you were not collecting that revenue.
My CFO is on the line. We could retroactively charge you, uh, councilman.
Just get, just give me a heads up, that's all.
Corey only, the Corey only plan. All right, perfect. So I think we have a game plan. Um, did anybody else have other questions before we adjourn for Seda? I believe Seda is seven PM on a different link, it's executive session.
Yes.
All right, great. Then I'm going to adjourn us. Thank you very much, everybody.
All right.